Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everyone. My goodness, how many smiling faces do we have here this evening? What a wonderful thing. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at Public comment may be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk@cityoftaf.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by City Manager Craig Jones, followed by an invocation from Pastor Sean Piper. If you'll join us, please.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you and ask you for help for those things that we cannot do alone. I thank you for those that are willing to do these kind of jobs that many of us aren't. Thank you for the city council members, for the police, the fire, the first responders. We pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom to do their jobs, discernment, that you would keep them safe from harm. We also pray that you give them courage when needed and help them to know what is good and right and true. Lord, I pray that you would give them these things not only tonight, but in their daily, everyday tasks. And bless them in their daily lives, because if they do well, we'll do better. And help us all to be good citizens and maybe make their job a little bit easier for them. And we pray this all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Shavira.
Here.
All right, item number one. First item on our agenda this evening is going to be the swearing-in of officers Juan Topete and Bryce Veach. Chief McMahon, please.
I'm never nervous on these things, but look at this turnout. These two gentlemen right here.
I brought the Band-Aids.
I know you did. There's some bleeding.
They got big families.
Only a real quick backdrop on these guys. Mr. Topete here has been with the City of TAF for quite a few years. He has been at our CCF, left, I believe, to the state for a while. And then when we reopened, he came back and joined us. And lo and behold, talked him right into the police transfer, and now we have him as a police officer.
Fantastic.
Proud of this young man. Another special young man we got here used to come up to me all the time in the gym, telling me how bad he wanted to be a police officer, like I've never heard that before. But, you know, this guy, every time I came in, "Hey, I'm Bryce Veach. I want to join your team, and I want to be part of TAF Police Department." So that means a lot to me when somebody does that to me. And then also, let me explain how this is. So I said, "Hey, let's get some loyalty to the city. We'd love for you to come over and work for the CCF." Goes and puts himself, we put him through the academy, goes to complete the academy for the Corrections Division. Then we decided to roll him right over into the Police Division. And now he just, the most well-trained officer you're probably going to see for quite some time. He did back-to-back academies, I believe, sixteen weeks and then another twenty-four weeks, something to that nature. Unreal. I would have quit after the 24th when they told me to go to the 25th. But that's me. So very proud of these young men right here.
All right, fantastic. Great to have you gentlemen aboard.
You bet.
They're going to love when they have to give a speech at the end of this thing.
They are. I look forward to it.
They're prepared.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Juan Topete.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance?
That I will bear faith, truth, and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
One more time?
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
That's going to hurt. Where's your glasses at, chief? Good thing they're black uniforms, right?
Oh, you're not forgotten.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bryce Veach.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support and defend?
I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance?
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties upon which I am about to enter?
The duties which I'm upon to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've never seen one of these go that smooth, but I've seen many mistakes, and they, you ask them, "State your name? Raise your key. State your name." But I want to say one more thing about these two gentlemen. Guess where they're from?
TAF. Yeah.
Love it. I love it.
Homegrown.
We love it. So very proud of these two, and these are our two new additions to the police department. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Doug, I know you want to take pictures. You want to take a bunch of pictures? You didn't have me in there.
I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to take a break from our normal agenda. We're not going to roll right into number two, because there is a great deal of family here who are very, very proud of these two young men.
Absolutely.
And I want you to get pictures, and pictures with the chief, and pictures with the parents. So go ahead, everybody. We're going to take a break. Get up, get those pictures.
I would. Why do I go to these short guys? Get over here, Juan.
Speaking about heading back to school, I just want to talk about the California, it's called the Phone-Free Schools Act. And I'd like to read it to you guys and share it. California has implemented a new law, the Phone-Free Schools Act, requiring all school districts, charter schools, and county offices of education to develop and adopt, excuse me, adopt, a policy limiting smartphone use during school hours. According to educational new publications, this policy must be developed by July 1st, 2026, must include input from students, parents, and educators, and be updated every five years. The law allows for exceptions such as medical necessity, emergencies, and individual instruction. The reality is this, is this law is going into effect July 1st, 2026, but most schools are prepping right now and have some policies in place. For example, we have it at TAF High. So I would encourage all parents to be informed, not only to be informed, go and learn to see what TAF's policies are so they know firsthand what the requirement, what the policy is, and they're not caught off guard. So, that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good information. School's getting ready to start, isn't it? Councilman Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor. As you already know, the school's starting up here pretty quick. And so be prepared to watch out for the kids that are going to crosswalks. And when school goes in session, out of session, it'd be a little bit of a mess. The other thing I want to go to, probably a little bit off-subject, is why in the hell is our governor worried about Texas? About gerrymandering stuff? That's Texas issue, isn't our issue? Our state is more gerrymandered, along with Illinois and New York. They can't even squeeze a, but out of a turnip. They want to, because of how we're so gerrymandered. Even just recently, a few years ago, like, for example, David Couch, they tried to create a position to have a Hispanic supervisor in the second district, I believe. And they haven't won. But they try to do it. They do it all over, pushing out Republicans or other candidates in different parties out so they can put their own Democratic elected officials in that place. Is California any better? It's all run by all Democrats. Name me a Republican that's in, is in a executive branch. Anyone in a judicial branch. How about other branches in there? It's all Democrats. Is California any better? So why is he so worried about Texas? He has his own problem here in California. We got crime, sky-high. We got homelessness. Why don't you fix that? We have wildfires. Why is he worried about Texas and we have wildfires here? We have cities here that are losing businesses. We have about almost 800 Californians left the state of California. Why? High taxes. Why don't we solve that? Higher fuel prices? He can solve that too, but they don't want to do it. Make it more business-friendly. Oh, no, we can't do that either. There are so many things that he can do in California to make the state great again. But he has to go ahead and try to put the blame on Texas that he's going to have to go ahead and spend millions of dollars to fight Trump. Why bother with Trump? He got problems here. Take care of your problems here. Didn't go ahead, you got time, money, go ahead and do your battles. But take care of us Californians first. We need to be taken care of, because more and more people are leaving, more businesses are hurting, and we're struggling day by day in order to survive. You know, spend their money on us. Don't worry about what Trump is doing, what Texas is doing. Concentrate on us. And that's what I have to say on that matter there. Because I just feel that he is trying to position himself, just be out front, so he can be reverent. So he's running for higher office in the future, so he's like, he's that big guy, that he's running so great. But in reality, he is hurting himself, because, like I say, California is burning. We need help from our governor and our state legislatures to put money into our cities. Not just give a couple hundred thousand dollars and give it, "Okay, it can only be used for this program only." It's got to be prevailing wages, it's got to have so much DEI people in there, got all these different restrictions on there, nothing gets accomplished. Just a little bit. But all the money goes to waste through the environmental issues, through all the regulations and red tape that is involved with it. But we need to have a better state government that's going to take care of all the cities in California, and TAF's included, because we're suffering. You know, people are leaving, you know, our state. So we got to do something different. So basically, Mayor, that's all I have to say. But I see the news and stuff, and I get a little rattled on there when I hear they're so much worried about other people than ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
I have nothing good to say at this time. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of schools, so everyone knows, Thursday, the 14th, is when the high school district goes back to school. when the high school district goes back to school. So if you're anywhere in that Seventh Street, Wildcat Way, Santa Media area, especially Thursday next week, and after that during the week, be prepared, and you're going to have kids around city schools. So all the other elementary schools and junior high start the following Monday, which is the 18th. So if you're curious, or if you happen to be driving anywhere between, I don't know, let's say Sixth Street and Emmons Park Drive, and Seventh Street and Lucard, it's probably going to be a little backed up, especially around lunchtime, around 11 to 12 o'clock. So avoid those areas if you can. The young men we had here tonight, I just wanted to say thank you again, and congratulations to Officer Topete and Veach. Definitely a source of pride to see guys that have walked these streets, now patrolling those streets. And it really reminded me that, kind of sees I'm in my life personally, you know, Bryce was a kid that was on a football field four years ago this time. He was one of our players, right? I grew up with his dad. We graduated high school the same day. And it's very odd now to kind of look and see those young men as adults in those positions of authority, taking that responsibility. It's a point of pride, but it definitely is surreal to kind of be on this side of it now as opposed to the younger side. So getting above, we're over the hill. And to all of our police officers, anybody LEO, especially the Taft PD that walked these streets, patrolled these streets, and keep us safe, everybody. I don't care if you live in Taft or not. God bless you guys. Stay safe, and thank you for what you do. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Guys and gals.
Yeah, oh, thank you for, yes. I meant it as a general neutral term, but I appreciate the clarification.
No worries. All right. Thank you very much. Speaking of our governor, our governor is out there, and he's always trying to keep himself in the news, like Councilman Cryer was saying. Well, our governor published this article, Gavin Newsom, Clean Energy Powers California's Economic Growth. Our governor's always boasting about us being the fourth-largest economy in the world. And right now, that's true. And a lot of the credit he is giving to clean energy in this article, a great deal of the credit. I was asked to comment on some of the things that he said in this article, because once one digs into it, one finds that it is full of misrepresentations, downright lies, bull lies. He talks about the fact that cost reductions in clean energy have made it the cheapest option on the market, the cheapest option. State of California utilities, electricity costs at least 200% north of 250% as every state this side of the Mississippi River. The fact of the matter is, at my house in Bullhead City, Arizona, electricity compared to electricity right here at my house in Taft, California, I pay 425% as much for electricity in Taft, California. A $200 electricity bill in Bullhead City, Arizona, right on the other side of the Colorado River, four and a half hours away, a $200 bill there is $850 here. So when one thinks about the life of, you know, John Q. Public and your residential lights, they think, well, maybe that's not that bad. Extra $600 is not going to kill you. But you've got to remember, these lights, this air conditioner, all the electricity used by government costs about four times as much. All the electricity used in the schools to heat them and turn their lights on costs about four times as much. All the electricity used in the stores, in your supermarkets costs about four times as much. All of the above. So a consumer, somebody who resides here, gets hit over and over and over again, all day, every day. So for our governor to claim that it's the cheapest form of electricity out there pains me, because I happen to know the truth. The governor goes on to say that the effects of climate change are spreading. Climate change, that's a catch-all. Since 2017, wildfires have destroyed communities from paradise to Los Angeles. Fires have destroyed communities from paradise to Los Angeles. If you talk about the Pacific Palisades Fire, they would, they would have you believe it was climate change that caused that, and it was a complete surprise. But the fact of matter is that back in 1961, November 5th, 1961, there was a fire, it was called the Bel Air Fire. And everything lined up the same way that Pacific Palisades Fire did. There were a couple of good water years, good rain years. So guess what? The underbrush grew, and it grew rapidly. Then along come the Santa Ana winds. Now, are the Santa Ana winds, is that a climate change? Is that something that just happened? Written reference to the Santa Ana winds goes back to 1871. That's when they started writing about it. The Santa Anas have been around just as long as it's been hot in the city of Taft in July. So that is a bunch of malarkey. After the big Bel Air Fire in 1961, the fire department, which put together a documentary, it was produced by LA City Fire, and it was called Design for Disaster. And they went through and they talked about what led up to the Bel Air Fire, the disaster that was the Bel Air Fire. And when people were watching news coverage of the Pacific Palisades Fire, they commented after seeing this 1961 documentary that they learned more about what actually caused those fires by watching the documentary produced in 1961 than they did by watching the modern news that was covering the Pacific Palisades Fire. Our governor goes on to say, comment in this same document, recent document, President Trump's tariffs and his big ugly bill are increasing the cost of energy infrastructure and consumer electric bills. So President Trump, who has been the president for about seven months, is responsible for extremely high electric bills that have been going on for 20 years. So climate change got the credit for something that's been happening for centuries. President Trump got the credit for something that the Democrats have done in this state for more than two decades. And it goes on and on. I told my students at Oil Technology last year, because I've been a mentor there for nine years, and I told my students, because the next presidential election, they're going to vote, and I told them, I said, you're going to be a force to be reckoned with. You're going to vote. You're going to help set the course of a country. So whatever you do, question the narrative. By all means, there's a lot of information out there. Please. It would take you, on your phone with Google, 90 seconds to figure out just how many lies are told in this article. That's it, just 90 seconds. My senior class proved it when I let them watch the video of what the governor said at Poota Creek, and that was prior to them graduating. So question the narrative. Everything going on is not happening because of climate change or because of the big beautiful bill. Lastly, I might add, because in here he talks about the fact that summers are getting hotter and hotter. So I did a little investigating. The 10 warmest years, 10 hottest days in Bakersfield, California's recorded history, 10 hottest days. In 2022, it got to 115 degrees. Well, that's not that long ago. But what's funny is, of the other nine, the most recent was in 1950, it got to 115 degrees. In 1925, it got to 115 degrees, and in 1908, it got to 115 degrees. It got to 116 degree twice, both in 1913 and 1931. But the hottest days recorded in Bakersfield were 117 degrees in 1931 and 1933, and number one, the hottest day recorded in Bakersfield, 118 degrees, was 1908. Now then, in 1908, there were 2.1 million people in the state of California. Currently, there are 40 million people. If the definition of climate change is the emissions caused by human beings burning fossil fuels, why is it that the hottest day was in 1908? We didn't have a 405 choked with 12 lanes of traffic idling in 1908. We didn't have all the aircraft. We didn't have any of the above. So here again, do a little research, okay? Because the truth, more and more seems to be so far separated than the garbage coming out of Sacramento. That's all I have to say. All right. Next up, department reports, item number four. Do we have any department reports this evening? All right. Come back up here, Chief.
It's because the world cycles, Mayor. It just, that's what it does, since its inception. Our planet has done that. Okay, I'm here today to read off our patrol statistics for the month of July. Now, I have subtracted some, which are the patrol checks, but I want you to be aware of that. That 1,154 total incidents, we had 387, correction, 387 patrol checks, and that's with our new patrol officers that we have out there, our new public, what's the word, what I'm trying to, civil patrol people that we have out there right now that are civilians, actually. So they're doing a great job. They're going out in our business districts, they're going up and down the streets and notifying our officers when they see something that we need to check out. So I just want to let you know that they're out there doing their job.
Excellent.
Okay. Total incidents, we had 786 for the month of July. Officer initiated, we had 399. Total cases written were 157, total misdemeanor and felony arrests of 89, 71 misdemeanors, and of course, the felony arrests were 18. So they're out there doing their thing. I've got two new ones that are coming on, and I'm proud they're going to be FTOing. It's usually anywhere from a 10 to 12-week FTO. If we can get them out early, we'd love to, but there are certain guidelines and restrictions that we have to meet through post. And I do want to give a shout out to the Kern County Sheriff's Department. Their academy has developed young men and women that we have brought into the city of Taft as our patrol troops, and they've done a great job. So I just wanted to give them a shout out, too. They're RTOs, their program is stellar, and we've reaped the benefit of it, that's for sure.
All right. Very good. Intergovernmental relationships, very critical.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
Sure.
Any other department reports this evening? All right, seeing none. Item number five, city manager statements. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statements tonight.
All right. Item number nine, city attorney statements. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
All right. Thanks, sir. Item number 10, future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
None here.
Seeing none, we'll move right into the consent calendar, items 11 through 15. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing no public, I would have to say no. All right. Consent calendar items are: item number 11, the minutes of the July 15th regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 12, the payment of bills, some 700,000, plus or minus. Item number 13, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number 21, June 2025. Recommendations is receive and file the monthly report for June 2025 from Kern County Fire Station Number 21, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506 OC 3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item 14, amendment to joint powers agreement of the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Authority. Recommendations is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement of the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Authority, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506 OC 3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item 15 is the adoption of the City of Taft Title VI Program Update for City of Taft and Taft Area Transit. Recommendations is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft authorizing the Title VI Program Update for the City of Taft and Taft Area Transit System, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506-1B3 of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here. None.
Hearing none. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items 11 through 15.
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabira?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that passed on a 5-0 vote. That, believe it or not, brings the open session portion of this meeting. Yes, sir?
All right. Did I just bring up one more point?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Mayor. Those two young gentlemen are going to be graduating from the Kern County Sheriff's Department Academy on Friday. They have, they've actually passed, they have graduated, but they're doing their stage ceremony on Friday, 2 o'clock at the Harvey Hall Auditorium, which is Bakersfield High School. Love for anybody to be there. Anybody out there would love to come. Please contact the police department, the Taft Police Department, and we will make sure that you have a seat for it. We'd love to see anybody there.
All right. Excellent. Thanks for letting us know. Appreciate that update, Chief. So this concludes the open portion of this evening's meeting. This council will be going into closed session for one item, conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, government code section 54956.81, undisclosed parcel. I want to thank you all for being a part of this meeting's. Taft will be a safer place beginning immediately. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.